I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this morning, this has some routine items we need to approve. I need a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on September 10th.
Some more.
Did I jump the gun? Sorry.
We'll catch it at the end. Accept an order filed in minutes of the committee on special education for the date's list, as well as accept an order filed in minutes of the committee on preschool education. Do we have a motion?
A second.
Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Okay. Does anybody have any public comments? Okay. So that moves us to our committee personnel.
Pretty busy this month with all the extra assignments and academic sports and activities. But the three things that I wanted to bring out were the retirees, Judy Hogan, Kenneth McNeil, and Charlene Mandla. Thank you for their time here. And other than that, it's pretty routine for this month.
Does anybody have any questions for this? Okay, so my consent, that carries. We do have one MOA.
See? Okay, so just.
No, I'm having an issue too.
All right.
Can you speak to the MOA?
So basically what we have is we have a MOA that's been, due to transportation constraints, we have to drop kids at the middle school earlier because we've had to condense our runs so that the runs are longer. And we can't stop and wait to a certain point in time to drop the kids then move on, or else it will be a domino effect down through the rest of our rooms for the high school and also the elementary schools. So what we have is we have an MOA for a position, it's basically supervision, it's morning supervision, it would be so we can drop the kids out in front of the school. At this point in time, it's outside. Obviously, when it gets colder, it'll be inside, and we have supervision for those kids that are getting dropped off a little bit earlier than they would if we limited down the number of bus runs that we had. It's very similar to like the lunch supervision and stuff like that that we have within the HFTA unit, but this is actually outside the workday and it's prior. And it's at a standard rate that we use for whenever people do additional things outside the workday. So if it's needed, it's basically in for, it's in the, it would be there for a couple years in case we need it, and then obviously we will be negotiating in two years to determine if it's still needed or not. Maybe things will switch around with transportation, so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for that? Okay. So we just need a motion to approve a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Some more.
Second. Amanda and Heidi, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And athletic. Maybe you want to do that one, or did you want?
Well, I can't see a thing being.
I know, mine's very delayed as well.
Yep. So athletic committee met, and Mr. Carpenter took us through a few different things. We did take a look at the name and likeness club memo that came from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. I just wanted to make sure that our board was aware that student athletes in high schools are starting to become part of the name and likeness, where you can use your name and likeness to generate funds. But when you do so, you cannot, student athletes in New York State cannot use any school insignias or school clothing, or NISFA clothing, or Section 2 clothing, would become an ineligible athlete. So we just want to make sure the board knew that. Mr. Carpenter is taking care of making sure that the student athletes and the coaches know that. The last thing we want is to have some student unknowingly trying to make a few bucks and use some apparel they should not be using, and then be ineligible for the sport that they love to participate in. So forward to come on that. We took us through some fall updates. You can see it on the front side, either by watch, he's going to have their first competition, I believe it's the 10th. I don't think we had an opponent on there, it said to be determined, but we will have somebody. That's a new, a new sport this year for us. And those fields are just adjacent to the boys soccer fields. Folks who've been here a while, get the old field hockey fields where that's occurring. Ball schedule's a little bit different this year. We talked about that, how it's only once around the league in most sports this fall. That allowed a lot of teams to have some flexibility to schedule contests against other leagues. It helps us to play against appropriate competition, whether you're the best team in the league or the team that struggles a little bit in the league. It allows you to get some games outside of the league to provide proper competition so we can work on skills and have some success. And the other that came up is that there's no overtime in soccer in our league this year. We talked a little more about boys golf, we talked about JV football, gave some updates there. They were 2-0 at that time, I'm not sure of the record at this time, because they probably had one more game, as maybe Noah's been away for just a few days. They had 30 kids with nine seniors as of that day when we met. And they're working on, Mr. Carpenter was working on something with Coach Watkins on senior recognition too, because although we don't have a varsity team, we want to make sure we recognize our seniors. We do so in a way that's respectful to other junior varsity teams that we're competing against, so they're working through that. Mr. Carpenter does a lot with the Footy's Leadership Summit. He leads that actually with another athletic director, so he'll be going to report back to the committee on how that goes. We have students that participate in that as well. We talked about what's upcoming for winter and spring sports. I don't know if I missed anything that you folks can remember, but that's what I had down in my notes.
Any questions? So we didn't have any motions for it. That moves us to our. Mrs. Mandla?
What? I'll take on it. Actually, I'll let Kevin do most of it, but. I'll start with the treasurer's report. This is for the month of August. We had 1.8 million in receipts in the general fund and 2.3 in disbursements, leaving us a balance in the general fund of $165,000, and a total cash on hand of 3.5 million. The extracurricular account balances are also in there for the month of August. Not a lot of activity, there was quite a bit though in basketball for summer programming that was run, which is nice to be able to have our girls and boys basketball continuing to play during the summer. And I think their monthly bills were also in there. If anyone had any questions on those, let us know. And I think I will let Kevin handle the audit and also some fudge transfers that we have.
Tonight, we have Chris Gilli, our auditor, who is here in the front row, and he's going to, everyone has a copy of the audit, it's linked in the agenda, we've also made a paper copy for everybody. The audit was completed. Chris came in last Tuesday, or Wednesday, Wednesday, to speak with the audit committee, and he's here tonight to present the audit. Once he gets done speaking about the audit, we will, the board will accept receipt of the audit, necessarily any findings or anything like that, receipt of the audit. And we'll also talk a little bit about the corrective action plan along with the audit. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris for his part of this.
Great. Thank you. So again, Chris Gilli, I'm an audit partner at Mengele Menster Bar, or MMB, and this is our second year performing the audit of the district. So last year, if you remember, we were in here a little bit later than anybody would like us to be based on the circumstances of having to change kind of late in the game. So I'm happy to report that we were able to get the schedule worked out to get you into a normal timeline again, and as you probably have seen, the reports are in final form, so you're on time, back on track. So certainly, things worked out very well this year. So I'm not going to go through everything that you have there. There's 80-plus pages worth of material. We went through with the audit committee in pretty good detail those reports, so I want to just touch on some of the highlights and then have to answer any questions if there are any. So we did audit the financial statements in accordance with professional standards. Those professional standards require that we plan and perform our procedures based on a risk assessment. And that risk assessment is really trying to target areas of higher risk, and then we plan and perform our procedures to be responsive to those risks. As part of that process, we consider your internal controls, but we don't provide an opinion on your internal controls. If we encounter anything that we feel is a significant deficiency or material weakness, we'll bring those items to your attention, and we'll talk about the couple of findings that we did have this year up here in a few minutes. We issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which is the clean opinion that you're looking for. That's the highest level of assurance that we can provide, that says we believe your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects with U.S. GAAP. Okay, so that's, that's a good clean opinion that you're looking for. Because you're a governmental entity, we also have to do an additional report that's in accordance with government auditing standards. That report goes through and talks about our consideration of your internal control over financial reporting, as well as your internal control over compliance. And we don't give an opinion on either of those items, but again, if we encounter significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we bring those items to your attention. So we do have two items in that report. The first is a material weakness based on the dollar amount of the adjustments that we proposed to the audit process. Most of those adjustments were really related to timing of year-end cutoff, you know, closing out the accounts payable, accounts receivable, things of that nature, nothing that we felt was indicative of manipulation or anything improper, but based on the dollar amounts we're required to report that as a material weakness. The second item is material noncompliance. So you do exceed the 4% real property tax law limitation on your unassigned fund balance. You're about 3.76 million over that maximum. I think I said this last year, this is not uncommon, you know, recently with all the extra COVID funding and that period where everybody had free and reduced meals for a while, so a lot of districts built up additional fund balance. There's really no ramification for being over that threshold at this point, other than the state telling you that you shouldn't do that. But everybody, I think in this room knows that funding is, is going to be a little bit harder to come by over the next few years, so not necessarily, you know, an imprudent use of funding, you know, based on the circumstances. The last report in the main financial stat statement packet is the uniform guidance report in accordance, the single audit report in accordance with the uniform guidance. So that's because you expend greater than $750,000 in federal awards, you're required to have a compliance audit done on those federal dollars. And we issued an unmodified opinion on your compliance with the uniform guidance that says that we believe you complied in all material respects with those compliance requirements. So again, that's that clean report that you're looking for, at the highest level of assurance we can provide in that report. We tested your education stabilization funds as the major program, similar to last year. This will probably be the last time we look at those funds based on the fact that they're, you know, pretty much winding down. We do have two items to report. The first is a repeat from last year related to tracking of equipment that was purchased with federal dollars. I still think this is maybe not the most important thing, but it's included in the compliance supplement that we're required to look at, and that was that you had purchased some playground equipment with federal dollars, and it didn't make it into your tracking of capital assets based on your vendor. So the recommendation there is just really work with the vendor, make sure they get that captured, and then, you know, make sure that if you were ever to dispose of that, there's a series of processes that you have to go through because that funding agency is going to want any proceeds back from paying for that equipment. I don't think that's going to happen with the playground, but that's what the compliance requirement says. So again, similar to last year. And then the second is related to the required education stabilization funding reporting, so you were required to submit an annual report to the state, and that state report wasn't submitted as of September 15th or so when we were looking at that piece. So again, it didn't change how you use the funds, we didn't encounter anything that we felt was unallowable or anything like that, it was really just a matter of not filing that report. So those were the two items to report in, in the uniform guidance report, but again, our overall opinion was that you complied in all material respects. We had some other minor comments for, just for consideration, not material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we talked through with the other committee and provided a copy to everyone on that, so those are just, you know, some items for, for consideration. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was the extra classroom activities fund. So we also audit the extra classroom activities fund, which is on a cash basis of accounting. And we do issue a qualified opinion on that because there's really no way for us to know that everything that should make it to the bank did make it to the bank. So we audit what's there and what's reported, but there's really no way based on the nature of those funds and the cash being collected for us to be able to get comfortable that everything is reported. That's a pretty standard report across the state now, most firms are issuing that same type of opinion on the extra classroom activity funds. And then we do have some comments related to the New York State Education Department's guidance, and there's certain things that they are looking for you to have related to student approvals and record keeping and things of that nature. I don't have any districts that I work with that we don't issue that comment letter because of the nature of it and student involvement. Usually, there's something that's missing, a student signature that's supposed to have it or something along those lines. Again, not significant in the grand scheme of what we're doing here and what you're doing here as a board. So otherwise, I really don't have anything else. I want to say thank you to Mary Kay and Kevin and the team here for giving us all the information. Mary Kay is right on top of it, I think, usually within, I think the longest response was maybe a couple of hours to get back, so really appreciate how quickly we get information and we're able to work through. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
How many districts do you folks work with?
So our Albany office, we do about 25. As a firm combined, we do about 100 across the state.
So Kevin, for that stabilization report, is that something that we plan on getting in soon?
Yeah, it'll be, it's still in my personal memory here, so it'll be up.
Where is your September 15th?
That's a, that's not the FS 10 reporting, that was a separate report that was specific to the education stabilization funds, it was kind of above and beyond. I don't know, if you haven't submitted, I don't know that there's any, I haven't heard of any, anything. Really what happens is that the state is required to report to the federal government, that's really where the main compliance requirement is, but in order for the state to do that, each individual district is, has to send that information, so I don't know if they'll, you know, what they may or may not do, the state may or may not do with that, but it is specifically listed as one that we just have to look for, so. I don't know that it would even be available to submit at this point, to be honest with you, without, you know, without really taking it. But again, I don't, I don't think there's really a significant impact to that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's always a great time. Okay, so we do have a few resolutions to do here. First, we just need a motion to approve, I believe, August treasurer's report. We have a motion.
Some more.
Second, advise?
Second.
Okay, so be resolved, Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the budget transfer in the amount of $540,618. You have a motion.
Kevin, can you just speak to that, what that was for? Sorry.
This is a cleanup adjusting entry for the audit.
Okay, that's right.
It is simply just switching money between principal and bond interest, okay? In the past, as long as we had the categories, we had funding within the categories, they were fine, but when it comes to bond and principal and interest, they wanted that entry, so it was part of an adjusting entry for the audit. That's all that's in.
Any questions? Do we have a motion? Second advise?
Second.
Crystal, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Be resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District is in receipt of the 2023-24 MMB and Co. external audit. You have a motion. Second advise?
Second.
Crystal, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. And lastly, be resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the corrective action plan for the external audit completed by MMB and Co. for the 2023-24 school year. You have a motion. That's second advise?
Second.
Heidi, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. That concludes audit, which is to transportation, Dr. Steele? Or Amanda?
She has to turn away.
Very standard report again this month. You see the DOT reports there, the trip reports there, a few words about our workforce from Mr. Cooper, but that's all pretty, pretty standard this month, not a lot notable going on. The one thing of discussion is we started a very kind of preliminary discussion about using GPSs on our buses, usability, logistics agreement, want to do something like that, so I know Kevin's been pre-searching, he wants to say a few words about it.
We spoke to a couple of school districts generally down in the Albany area about what they, what they put in, and I spoke to businessmen, business officials, they have been directed to the Transportation Department. At this point in time, Bethlehem has all kinds of information on it, I'm just waiting for them to send down with the vendors exactly what they're doing, what they're seeing in savings for something like that, how it really is affecting it. And also, more importantly, how they implemented that, because GPS on school buses, it can be a very good thing, especially while you're sending children out, it's less cold, to know when that bus is coming. With technology like that, you have to make sure you also have the right safeguards in, because it can also be used in a detrimental way. So what we're doing is we're speaking to schools to see kind of, they follow the same things and what they're using it for, and actually, we may tie that into a grant or project, that'll, that'll not only be the GPS, but also some student recognition type thing. also some student recognition type thing on those school buses. Mr. Ward and I spoke about that today. So right now, we're in the stage of getting all the information from other schools. We're trying to find out some more schools that use it, and then we'll move from there.
So the purpose is for bus drivers to plan a route, or is the purpose for parents to be able to see when the buses are landing?
Several different. One, for the bus drivers to plan their route. So if you have a sub, everything is lined up there, you can actually have like pictures of the kids and everything like that. Number two is for us to know, other than using the radio, we can go, we can go on the computer and see, okay, well, bus 178 is over here. And three, it's also for parents, because sometimes buses get caught up in traffic or accidents, other vehicle accidents, that slow their rundown and, you know, when it's five minutes late, they can, it can be used to see where that bus is and how close it is.
It's like light 360 for school buses, right? You can watch the little heads go around.
So does it tie into like, like, do other districts use it where it ties into like our notification settings already that like if it's behind schedule, it would auto put a notice or something to a parent?
That's the information I'm waiting for, is if you can do that. Because right now, if we get caught, let's say there's an accident, the bus has to be rerouted, and it's going to be 10 or 15 minutes late, we have to radio back to the bus barge. They have to pull that list and they start to make calls like that. But this could be, it'd be great if it was something that could be quick out to everybody on that bus, just to let them know.
I think the initial thought was like a tracking thing so you can get your kids out efficiently, they come up efficiently, know where the bus is, but it's, you know, that's one small part of a much bigger thing than I thought it was initially.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions for Brad? Okay, who's Transportation? Building and Grounds, Mrs. Boiler.
I will try to be quick. It wasn't quite as much this week or this month, but Building and Grounds is busy. We were almost done with the boiler work as of the time of our meeting. I imagine it's completed by now. The EPC lighting work, intermediate school was started, the high school was almost complete. There was discussion of the new LED parking lot lights that were going to go in that are going to be big energy savings. There was some tree work at the high school, trees that were identified as potential problems after the summer. We've had a couple go down, so it's kind of a preventative maintenance thing. Painting wrapping up in the elementary schools, moving on to the middle school. And the update on the Capple project is there was a meeting for the kitchen design discussion, which led to further discussion of timing. It was a project that was going to be probably later in our phases, the two, three phases, but there's the potential that it may want to be moved up, and Mr. Ward can speak to that more, just because of expense constraints, you know, with pricing of inputs, maybe want to move that up so that we know we have enough to complete the work in the manner that we want to. So do you want to talk about that now, or?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So there's, we had talked previously about expedited review that was available through New York State and saying that it wasn't something we wanted to pursue. At this point, it's something that we may want to pursue once we get a better idea of the drawings on the new kitchen and cafeteria design, to move in a summer ahead of where we were going to originally do it. That's still up in the air. We don't want that to be a surprise that in another month or two months, we're saying, hey, we want to move that up and we want to do this expedited review because that's going to cost, it'll cost some money to do so. But in the grand scheme of the project, to make, so we can all the work completed on time, Kevin and I talked a little bit, we're both concerned, and Dave, that we've got a lot of the biggest things happening in summer three, which I have a lot of faith in everybody, but why moment if there was one less thing to do in summer three, only if it makes sense? Because there's also the flip side where it could cost us more to do that because and you're splitting your GC, you're getting another set of contractors, another set of bids, so there's a lot to think about. So more to come as more information comes available to us. Like, I got it pretty much.
Yeah, that was perfect. Yep. So last was just the property on Martindale, going back and forth on that. I don't know if there's been any updates since our meeting.
We, the appraiser team.
Okay.
Yes, finally, we got, the appraiser was able to do that property, and then the property over behind DL2. So we are expecting an appraisal report on both those properties hopefully by the end of the week, so we can start moving forward there.
So I did see that the owner did respond.
Yes. He wanted, he wanted an additional appraisal, and that's why we ordered the additional appraisal, which is the reason why we had the board action last month, so we'd be ready to go if he did respond. So right now, we feel like we're in a good spot with the response and getting those two appraisals, the same work done, and just waiting on the report. So we'll bring that back next month to the board, or sooner if we have to. But I would say right now, comfortably, it's probably going to be next, next month when we bring those back to you folks.
The last thing is just the monthly progress report from Schoolhouse, and it's linked in there if anybody wants to go through it. That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, that concludes Building and Grounds, that moves us two paws, Mrs. Lansley.
So you're going to see a bunch of stuff on there. It's all for first read, there's nothing for second read tonight. And I actually, I saw you reaching for your microphone, Mr. DiCaprio. I am going to turn it over to Mike to talk about the things that are on here in a little bit more depth.
Sure, and I'll just cue Kevin to be ready as well, Mr. Lansley. So we have, we have four items on here. Last item from the annual policy audit, which we actually get back in February or March, that's that 15 or 20, sometimes more than that, policies for us to review. This one, our own, it got lost in the shuffle, I believe, over the summer. 3420 is non-discrimination by harassment in districts. Very top-level policy in terms of what a lot of these policies are doing now is adding definitions. It seems like that's what this one has done differently from its old policy, is add a whole bunch of definitions that match current regulation and current law. We also spent a few minutes, this is not for your first read or second read, but we did spend some time. It's required of us to review the parent and family engagement policy every year as a committee, and we had to do that as part of, as part of a desk review, as part of a state ed submission. So we did that at the table. You can see the document there. It's basically, when we think about parent and family engagement for our Title I families, what are some barriers, what are some needs, what are some strategies? So we brainstormed a bit, I put a document together, if you're interested in looking at it, that will get uploaded as part of one of our many state ed submissions. And then new for this month is one policy and one form that goes with it. The policy is Title IX and sex discrimination. Again, this one has a number of definitions added, defining discrimination, defining harassment. Importantly, to our good, one of the things that is included now is a change in the rules around investigation. In the past, your investigators had to be separate from your decision makers, and the new rules, regulation, laws says that the investigator can be the decision maker, which definitely helps out in smaller communities. Kevin, you want to jump in on that one at all?
Yeah, that actually is beneficial even to us. So not only, not only now can the person that does the investigation also be the decision maker, we've also, what they changed the reg is, instead of complaints being in writing, they can also be verbal now. So that's one of the reasons why you'll see the next item, which simplifies the form for complaints, where when, when this is brought up, where somebody comes to you and tells you about it, we can have people fill out that form immediately, just so that we, we will have a paper record on our file. But now it's not required for the person filing the complaint to actually do one in writing. So it cleans things up, it's got all the updates in the regs now, so it puts us in a good spot moving forward.
Okay, that takes care of 3421F. Typically, we don't, we don't include the forms, the internal protocol procedures at policy committee. This one seems to hit the mark very well, so we are going to include it. It does exactly what is required, and it is very simple. If you click on that, it's a one-page, hey, I have a complaint, I have a worry, I have a concern, that gets kicked up to our Title IX officers.
Is that something that we would need to approve when it's on for a second read, or it's just there for all information, so we see it and know?
You're not really approving it, I just wanted to say, we just wanted you to say. Correct. That's, that's it for policy. Questions?
All right, so no questions. That concludes policy, then we'll just to have the same.
Okay, we have a couple of things for advocacy. This Thursday is the voting delegate vote from NISBA for the position statements. So I haven't heard anything from anybody. Anybody? Anybody? So I'm just going to vote how I feel I'm accorded with vote, and I will accept the form of thanks in written or verbal form. That jar went past midnight. We also had the ASBA meeting, which was very, very informative, and the speaker was wonderful, and it was all about school finance, but man, it was like soul-sucking. I mean, Kevin's used to it, but I just was like, the speaker just talked about how the, you know, systematic underfunding of public education has now kind of caught up with us. And on the one hand, we've talked about this in the past, every student in the state of New York is deserving of a quality public education, but it's going to get to the point where we're all fighting amongst ourselves for a piece of the pie. An example of that was Hold Harmless, and he put up local examples of schools that have benefited from Hold Harmless and schools like Hudson Falls who have not and who have just been made whole. So that, I'm sure we're going to discuss that on Thursday. But that was a big topic and food for thought. And then we've got the NISBA conference coming up this month. So me and Amanda and Dan will come back in November and give you a synopsis of all the great stuff we learned. And did I miss anything?
No, I think you.
Oh, and we're meeting this month, so I'll get in touch with the committee closer to the date.
Okay. No, you nailed it.
I'll say one thing, the handout was also LinkedIn, or either one of my weekly reports, but you had, that's 44 slides of stuff. It was, it was very interesting.
Okay, and we have any questions for Heidi? Okay, that concludes advocacy, that concludes committee reports, moves us to Transportation Report.
Yeah, so I want to thank the board. As you know, I was away for a few days last week. I got to spend some time with my daughter, who's studying overseas in London, so I wanted to thank the board for granting me the time to go. It's the first time in a 27-year-so-far career that I have been away for a trip during the school year, but it was the only time I could go, and she'll be back on December 14th. Two, two days in London, three nights in Paris, and then back to London. So we got to see an awful lot of things that I've only read about in textbooks in my French and Spanish classes in high school. So thank you, I appreciate it very much. Second most important to me, from my family, we've got some students here tonight out there. I think I've got the names right, I've got Jacoby, Mary Jane, and Kennedy. Hopefully I got it right. So from the student council, as you know, one of the board's goals is to have some more students be involved in our board meetings. This has nothing to do with anything that I did to try to get them here. I think it has to do with their positions with the student council. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm wrong at times. But thank you for being here tonight, just watching how the process unfolds. If you have questions, or if you're interested in becoming more involved with the board, we are going to be looking to have a student board member. As we move through this year, we have to have one in place by July 1st of '25. We're looking to be a little bit more quicker than that with getting somebody in place. So if you're interested, please reach out to Mrs. Hogan, or reach out to me, or anybody to inquire about that. Second, actually third, I guess, family, students, the board. Board appreciation month earlier than the week that they recognize it, but I won't see you folks again until November. But our primary school students, there were some things around at the seats that they made. There's also a couple of bigger things behind, I know they're behind me and I'm blocking them, but I do want to take just a minute to thank the board and let you know that our students and staff do thank you. I think it's hilarious what a primary school student believes that a school board is. So, and they're primary school kids, so it's kind of like, you know, it's to the darndest thanks. What is a school board? Something to make crafts on, something you put work on, you use it for a drawing, you color on it, it's like a bulletin board. You write on it with markers. So if you tell people you are on the school board in the primary school, you may be drawn upon. There's something maybe tacked to your photo. They also wanted to let you know that they're thankful for the school board because they support all of us, and they put some things on there about the new soft seating, the chrome marks, and you guys can think of enough to read them all to you, but the countdown spaces with lobbly stools. They took some time, and that's all their own artwork, obviously. And again, I know that I'm blocking it, but thanks to the board, from the students, thanks from me, and really appreciate the work. As you know, it can be some long hours and an awful lot of stuff to read and a lot of committee meetings, and even occasional trip to New York City to do the work that it takes to make the school operate. So thank you. Next up is the Utica National Head of Class Titanium Award. So I'm actually going to present this to somebody tonight. So the person that makes it so we get this award every year is sitting in the audience, so she'll be unhappy that she came in person tonight. But I want to thank Mary Kay, and so would Kevin, for the work that she does so we can get this. So I would like to have Jeff present that to her. I don't, but if you can take a photo too. So we're going to take a photo of Mary Kay. Thank you so much for your work on this and everything else, too. It's truly appreciated. Go around with it. Thank you, Mary Kay.
Speech!
And next up on my list is progress to tenure. We certainly don't do those reports during public session, but I want to make sure it is during public session. And I say, during executive session tonight, I'll do updates on progress towards tenure for our non-tenured administrators, and there are several. So I want to make sure I'm doing that with you folks as well. There's six that we'll go through, and I promise it won't be several hours long. But I want to make sure we follow our, it will not be, it will not be. So we will make sure. And we linked it in there. Also wanted to share some good news. It's LinkedIn there from the Vermont State University, formerly called Castleton, but now they've combined all of those to let you know that we received a letter of commendation letting us know about Carleen Higgs and our students' participation in the music festival they had. So I wanted the board to see that, that we sent a group of students and one of our teachers with those students to participate, and we heard good things about what they're doing, how they're representing Hudson Falls. So always good, and want to share that with the board when it happens. So congrats to her, and congrats to the students who participated. And then last on my list is the 24-25 calendar update. As you know, we're going to do a two-hour late arrival as opposed to a two-hour early release on October 11th. Due to a resolution to amend the calendar, that was, again, a lot of logistics to work out with transportation and everything with a lot of students going in different directions. It works out better for us to be able to have that time to do professional development with our staff to do the late arrival, because we would had to have a lot of students not go to their afternoon programs if we had done an early dismissal. So it affects the students less, it certainly does affect the students anytime we don't have classes all day long. But our DSDMT last year had asked for us to have a few two-hour blocks of time, so we did schedules this year. So just looking for a motion to approve that. A notification went out to families last Thursday or Friday, the first one, and we'll probably do another one before this Friday. I'm looking at graphic, because he sends those out for me, just to remind folks. That's what I have.
Okay. So we do have a resolution. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the change to the 2024-25 school calendar. the change to the 2024-25 school calendar for October 11th. And then the second.
Second.
Megan.
And then just ahead for November, board pictures, 6:15 at our, before our board meeting on November 12th. So if you, we want to get a group photo and if you want a new headshot, right Kelly, they'll do a new headshot if you don't like the one that's on the website now. I'll say, my mother used to say to me about my photos for, can't fix ugly. So we can get you a new headshot if you want. Straight from, that's not, my mom wouldn't say that about me. My father would. That's both your souls. Both of them a piece, yes.
Can I just add one thing? And I'm not really sure where it fits. So as a Bozies board member, I attended the feedback session for the Blue Ribbon Commission and I know that Mike went to the earlier one. I just want to give everyone a heads up that there are some big changes in the pathways to graduation and in the type of diplomas that New York State is going to be handing out. So there was a QR code they sent us home with that I could locate and send to anybody on the board interested, but they are looking for feedback from every stakeholder group. Not that at this point it would make too much of a difference because it seems like it's on its way and that they are in the end processes of it, but if anybody is interested to look into that, it was very, it was a really interesting session. So I don't know if you have anything to add.
Yeah, I went to the earlier one that was geared for educators. The first thing the general public will see is the portrait of a graduate. Portrait of a graduate is what all of this is supposed to be based on. There are seven aspects to it. We want our students to be critical thinkers, global scholars.
Financially.
Financially literate across the content areas. And the idea, which is, I'm struggling to comprehend how they'll do it, but the idea is that a graduate, a diploma will be based on students proving they have hit each of those seven items. To further break it down, each of those seven items could be assessed differently. If you are a test taker, the regions will still exist for you to take those tests and prove you can hit those marks. But if you're a project person, there would be rubrics out there for Capstone. If you were a performance person, there would be sealed, like the seal of bi literacy and the seal of civic readiness. They're interested in the world of work, so there would be the idea of internships and job postings and things like that as well. I'm curious how the logistics will play out and I'm curious, we don't, you know, in thinking about our neighbors and thinking about other students around the state, how does that play out when you think about what Fordham could do for its students versus what Hudson Falls could do for their students versus what Shenandoah could do for their students? I'm very interested to see how that would play out. But just know that the first thing you will see is this portrait of a graduate that everything following will be based on.
And my understanding too is that when this change goes through, it's kind of like we all have the same driver's license, but you could get your boating license and your hunting license and all of those other things added onto it. There's one diploma for everyone coming out of a New York State high school and then all of the different things that used to be like the region's diploma, the local diploma, and then I think there was a third type, more of a trade-based diploma. It's all one diploma and you can have the seal of bi literacy or the seal of, I don't know, there's probably a math one. And I thought that was interesting as well.
All correct. All correct. We do hit all of those things currently. You can get a math endorsement, a science endorsement, you can get an honors endorsement, you can get the CDOs prevention, you can get a CTE pathway. We have all of those things, but it takes almost an advanced diploma to not only understand them, but be able to articulate them. And I can tell you, it's, it's a challenge to track all of that. When our students start earning graduation credentials as early as eighth grade, you're talking about five years with 1,000 different paths through those, those five years of school. The idea is, yes, that they should simplify it somehow. Everybody gets a diploma and then you could have 20 different stickers that can belong to it.
I thought the interesting thing too that I'm going to be looking at from an advocacy standpoint specifically for Hudson Falls is that I never really got a clear answer. The region's tests are still going to exist. All of those tests are going to exist and they're going to use those tests to hold our district accountable, but kids don't necessarily have to take them. So I don't know whether that's good for us or bad for us or I'm interested to see how that plays out.
It's challenging because that's not really the case for all the pre- through-aid exams.
Yep.
For all the common, but nobody's required to take them.
Right.
And they're not required to move on at very low. There's a, to get one more piece in the weeds, which is. It would have to go away at federal level if we were to implement something where not everybody has to take them.
So it was, it was a really interesting session.
It's great stuff.
Yeah.
So a lot of, I think, years of work.
And that's all I have.
So do you have a need to enter executive session for progress to tenure? So I've seen a motion to enter executive session.
So.
Amanda?
Second.
Don't expect there to be any action afterwards. We're not voting on anybody's tenure this evening. So folks, you're welcome to excuse yourselves, hang out till we come back in session to adjourn, but you're going to see.
I had a modified soccer number, which is the reason I'm there. Presently, we have no JV girls soccer and I was wondering what the plans are for next year, if we're going to have a JV girls. Eighth grade girls, they just had a heck of a matchup against Cleveland's very, they split with Cleveland's very, which is two times our size. We're 18 eighth graders, so I think we, it is one score here without, you know, you go to Jersey, you go anywhere else, that we have the kids and I think it'd be a shame that we don't allow the JV girls to be girls coming up.
I think it really all depends on what they have for participation numbers when it comes to signups, when they do enter ninth grade.
For example, this year, there's nine freshmen and they have an A in the B team.
I mean, we would love to have a JV team, there's no doubt.
Oh, those are ninth graders playing modified?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't understand.
Our goal is to always have all levels of participation, which is, look at our football this year. You know, we just didn't have the numbers and that's why we didn't have a varsity football team.
So who's going to make the decision? Is it going to be purely numbers driven or, because that's not why we're hearing they make that decision?
I would say.
Because they've got girls on varsity and they told that four girls from varsity came down because they were told that they wouldn't get any playing time, they weren't going to cut them and they weren't going to have JV teams. So they brought them down to modify. So they're playing modify and now we've got girls on modify where they made an A team and a B team. Sometimes the B team gets to play if the teams they're playing will play a fifth quarter. But sometimes they don't get to play, so they're not getting the time to play and develop their skills because they're doing a lot of sitting, which I'm, I'm just saying this because my granddaughter is actually on the A team, so she plays most of the whole game. So, and she's doing very well, but now we have all these girls who are not playing because we have ninth graders that have come down. So we're not developing those girls. Who knows if they'll come out next year because they didn't get to play this year. So I don't think it's fair to them when we're saying we don't have kids coming out to play and they're all home on their gadgets, but we're not allowing them the opportunity either.
Yeah, we can, we'll bring it back to the athletic committee and Coach Crapfer, Director of Athletics, Physical Education, Health and Wellness. But it is a numbers game, as you all know, it always is. But this, this board has been fantastic about supporting anything where we can get kids participating, just like we started the part of a merger for girls ice hockey and that's not why we're here. But it's not a financial consideration, it's not that. It's about numbers of kids to participate in the team and making sure we have enough children or students, athletes on that team to also finish the season. Because sometimes you'll have 15 at the beginning and two weeks and four quit and then every, nobody has any place to play because you only have the first three days of practice to move that child from varsity level, which is JV or varsity, to modify. After that, if the team falls, they cannot participate. So there's some rules and I don't know if you guys are aware of, but I'm not trying to speak, just, it is a numbers base, but the board supports it, athletic committee definitely does. We want kids playing sports and involved in drama and everything else, all of those things. That's why we're here. I appreciate it. We'll bring it back to athletic committee and, and we certainly want to have those levels. So tell the girls, Denade, if you have contact with those girls, don't be discouraged. Sign up when it's time to sign up and let's do it. Bring your friends.
A motion of, of it with their friends.
Like I said, you have 18 eighth graders right now on the team.
Yeah.
There's going to be 18 freshmen next year.
That's crazy. We had 30 of them. Yeah. It's awesome. You win it. So what was it, what was the score tonight?
Six to four.
Six to four.
Got one other name, one more. Presently, it's my understanding that you and I get into junior high until 7:30 in the morning if you, unless you go in for early breakfast. You have kids getting out on a bus route at 5 after 7:00 this morning. They had to wait outside for 25 minutes. We can't at least just bring them in somewhere. It was in the 30s this morning.
Yeah, we spoke to that at the beginning of the meeting too about as the weather changes, we also just, the board just approved a memorandum of agreement with the teachers association during this meeting so we could have additional supervision in the morning to do exactly what we talked about. But it's, it's weather dependent.
I apologize for being.
Nope, that's okay. It's a, it's a concern.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll see it rolling out.
Yes.